All right, it is 5:15. This is Committee of the Whole. We have four council members here in chambers and we have Councilmember Rosalba Dominguez calling in. And we can start off with approval of the minutes. It was from Committee of the Whole, February 15th, 2022. Any corrections, concerns, discussion? If not, I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes for the Committee of the Whole from February 15th, 2022.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, sorry.
Oh, no, you're okay. I just wasn't sure if I'd heard you or not, so I wanted to give you time for that. That was an aye in approval or an aye in opposed?
Aye in approval.
Okay, that's what I thought, just making sure for the record. Thanks. All right, next up, we have two discussion items tonight, starting out with the Trans Jordan landfill presentation. We have Russ and Jaren with us today. Thank you for joining us. If you want to come on up, we would love to hear about what you do.
All right. So, last time I was here talking to you guys about the report on the board, I offered to invite Jaren over to kind of give you an overall of what's going on with Trans Jordan, what the changes are going to be and what things are looking like out there. There are some new faces in here. We didn't do the legislative breakfast out there, so you guys will be invited out there, but that didn't happen this year, so.
And I apologize. What was your name and your title?
Russ Cackola, I'm the Street and Stormwater Superintendent, but I'm also over solid waste for.
And that's in Murray or?
Murray City, yes.
Okay, sorry.
Nice to meet you and welcome. I've met a few of you, but Jaren has 20-plus years in the solid waste industry. For the last six years, he's been with Trans Jordan, and for the last three years, he's been our executive director. In the last three years, done more than I've seen done since I've been on the board. He's an amazing guy, great leader, and he gets things done that the board asks, and even this today. So, I just want to introduce Jaren and let him do his presentation. So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Russ. Appreciate it. So, Russ and Danny sit on the board and appreciative of them and their support. As you know, that's really important for a small organization like we are. So, we get all of your waste from the residents of Murray, and I'm going to explain that a little bit. I hope you can see my screen, and I'm going to go through kind of just what I've got here for you. See if I can wake this up. So, just for a little bit of a history, we were formed in 1958 with Sandy and West Jordan, and then Midvale joined in 1960, and you can see there in 1968, Murray City joined. So, we've been around a long time. At first, it was a handshake agreement with Kennicott and filled up a hole out there in the middle of what people thought was nowhere, and now we've got multimillion-dollar homes going right next to us, and things are kind of different and changed, and so we're learning to evolve and change too. So, in 1996, South Jordan joined us, and then finally in 1997, Draper and Riverton joined us as well. So, those are the seven cities that make up the approximate half a million residents that bring us waste, so. Our primary function is to serve those half a million residents in the south half of Salt Lake County, and then we also get all the waste from the commercial entities, your Walmarts, your Amazons, anybody that produces trash from the south half of Salt Lake County essentially comes to Trans Jordan. And the seven cities, by being a member city, enjoy significant cost savings. We have some of the cheapest or the lowest tipping fees in the country, and we pride ourselves on that while also maintaining best practices and the advancement in scientific measures as far as safety environment, which I'll talk about here in a minute, some of the things we do. So, you're welcome to stop me at any time if you've got questions, or we can wait till the end, so either way. But I'm going to go through here and just kind of talk about some of the things, hopefully answer your questions. Again, we feel like we give the best value for low rates. The member city tipping rate has been and continues to be one of the lowest in the nation, and I talked to the board about this all the time. We continue to maintain that and will continue to maintain that in the future for the residents of Murray City. Environmental best practices, we are in full compliance with state and federal laws, and we actually exceed them. Our previous executive director was very on the ball and started a gas collection system, and we've been producing power and energy from our power plant from the methane out there powering about 4,000 homes for the last 15 years. And that'll continue to grow as we finish the landfill and move on to other options. And then our long-term commitment is to have preparations underway and as we fill the landfill and as it's time to move out of the community in South Jordan, that we have preparations underway to move that waste to a new facility and continue to give that opportunity to the residents of Salt Lake County. We currently have about 5 million tons of landfill space available, our current site, so we've got about 10 years of life left, and that's with a 3% annual growth. We've actually exceeded that 3% annual growth over the last few years, so we're growing. And as you know, if you've been in West Jordan and South Jordan recently, that growth is all kind of centered in that Harriman area, right where the landfill sits. We're at 10473 South Bacchus Highway, if you haven't visited us. We're kind of right off that area, which right now is under master plan with UDOT to decide what to do with the highway and how the traffic will work out there and everything. So, we're part of that as well and stay in those discussions. After closure here in the next 10 years, about 2031, we'll maintain that site for at least 30 more years. We anticipate longer because our offices will be there, we'll have a transfer station there, but environmentally, that landfill will be maintained. It's like a large burrito, I call it environmental burrito, right? All the waste breaks down, which is inside of it, we collect the gas off of it and convert the gas through grain energy into power for homes. So, we'll continue to maintain that, make sure environmentally it stays whole and is taken care of appropriately. It's actually a fantastic place for a landfill because the groundwater is so deep from Kennicott's efforts. The groundwater, we don't have a single well that was drilled originally that has any water anymore, over 430 feet down because Kennicott is constantly remediating the water in the area. It's not a good thing because of what Kennicott's going through, but it's a great thing for us because there's no chance of anything environmentally happening to the groundwater out there, which is fantastic. We landfilled in last fiscal year 410,000 tons. We've set records the last 10 years as far as the tonnage we get, that's close to a half a million as you can see, and we expect by the 2031 date to be transferring a half a million tons from South Utah County or South Salt Lake County to our landfill we own in Bayview, which is in Utah County, and I'll explain here in just a minute. Our hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We maintain those hours year-round, and that's primarily for the public. The commercial trucks use from about 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that early hours and late hours, we're generally just serving the public, give them an option to get rid of their green waste and bring out their trash and those kinds of things. We pride ourselves on providing a safe and clean and efficient facility for our customers. Hopefully, if you've been out there, you've had a great experience, and we hope that continues. We do try to do the best we can as far as staffing is concerned, and customer service is very important to us. On a busy Saturday, if you come out, you'll probably sit in line for a little bit. We apologize for that, but we can only process so many transactions, so we're averaging three transactions a minute on Saturday. That's pretty fast to get you, get you paid, and get you on your way. So, we do a little over 2,000 tickets on a busy Saturday. Come out in April or May, you probably ought to choose a day other than Saturday, and some people are fine with that. They understand they're going to wait in line, and we do what we can. We run multiple scales coming in, as well as we can walk the line, and if somebody just has a small minimum load, we can charge those really quickly and get them out of line and get them moving on. So, very busy, and this is for the future planning, you'll see why that's so important. We have a public convenience drop-off center out there, which is, if you've been out there and been on a big, large concrete pad, what it is is like a big open air outside transfer station. We have residential drop-off there, so the commercial entities aren't allowed to go. There's recycling drop-off, and then we take all the freon out of anything, it's like a fridge or freezer, that's an EPA thing we have to take care of. So, if you charge more for that, that's why we take the freon out of it, they recycle that freon, and then we can recycle those products. So, that's a big area for us. We're doing a big expansion on that as well right now to serve the public a little better. With the new transfer station going in Sandy, this will be a second transfer station out here, and so we want to maintain this open area for the residents for the next 30-plus years. Part of that area, drop-off, is a household hazardous waste program. It's actually run by Salt Lake County. For every ton that comes to the landfill, $1.85 is taken off and put to this program. It's a great program. My staff run it, but it's paid for, the recycling of all the chemicals and so forth is paid for through that program. And what that removes is any oil, paint, batteries, pesticides, even up to medicines and things like that that shouldn't go in the trash can be recycled properly. And the most of them are either reused or repurposed for use so that they don't go, obviously, into the landfill. And this is free, so if a resident comes out and says, hey, I got paint, that oil, we take that for free, we generate a ticket for them, they're able to go up and drop that material off where it's handled properly.
And I just want to note, it's a really slick process. For the paint purpose especially, I took like 15 cans of paint from our previous homeowners and just loaded up the back of the car and took them up there, and they just took it all.
Excellent.
Very easy.
Good, and we also have a reuse center there as well, which is anything that comes in that's been unused, you would be amazed at how much stuff people throw away that's brand-new. Oil, whatever it is, we have a reuse center, the public can come in and take whatever they want out of it, as long as they can reuse it, we don't care, so it doesn't have to be put through a recycling program, it actually gets reused. So, about 25% of the total flow that comes into there is actually reused, which is great. Here's some statistics just for the city of Murray. Contracting curbside, which is the tons that come from ACE that collects the residents' waste, there was 13,226 tons that came from Murray City. Of the city trucks, which are city trucks from the Public Works folks and Park Department, and those guys bringing us waste, there's 1,335 tons of waste that came that way. Green waste, we had 147 tons of green waste dropped off by West Jordan, and then we had, you paid a total of $265,307, and that's based on the member city tipping rate of $20 a ton. So, the city pays $20 a ton where a resident that comes in, if they drop off, it's $35 a ton. So, the commercial entities offset a lot of the costs, so the residents of the seven cities enjoy discounted rate essentially. And that's where the ownership and the membership in the Trans Jordan facility comes out, bears its cost. So, we had 1,693 residential visits, excuse me, that originated from Murray, and we had 2,332 visits from ACE as they brought the waste from your residents. We have a green waste program. We do about 25,000 tons of green waste recycling every year. We chip it up, make it into compost, we have a certified compost program, and reuse the product as much as we can. Unfortunately, because of the constraints and the growth out there, that program is run on land that is not ours, and that land is going to be developed, and so that program, we're going to stop accepting green waste in November of 2023. So, there will no longer be that, an option for that. Now, most of the cities bring us through just the residents hauling it to us themselves, but West Jordan, for example, is the one city that has curbside green waste, and I get a lot of questions from city councils all around the valley, we'd like a green waste program. There's some issues there. Number one, I don't have a place to run a green waste program anymore. So, the city of West Jordan opened up an RFP stating, we don't care costs, just give us an option of something to do with our green waste. They did it for a six-week period, they got zero responses. There just isn't a market for green waste to go somewhere else. There's not a place, it takes about 30 acres of land to process it, and it's very smelly. It's my smelliest thing I have at the landfill is the grass that's collected from residents from West Jordan. And so, with the encroachment we have, there's no space out there for us to operate, and so we're going to have to look at some other options. Some of the things, the alternatives we're looking at, one is a joint green waste program with regional partners, so I'm going to talk about our ownership in another landfill where the waste will go eventually. I've already started that conversation with them, I am currently the O&amp;M chairman on that board, and so we've talked about that a few times. The other option is to put the landfill or the green waste in the landfill, and it sounds like a terrible thing, but it's actually one of the best things you can put in a landfill because it's all carbon and moisture, which breaks down immediately into methane, we can make more power. And eventually, after about 10 years, that waste is completely gone, from the waste is broken down and will actually degrade. So, yeah.
Murray actually, the power that's produced off the meth-
Just if anyone's watching on line.
The power that's produced from the methane is actually put into Murray City's grid, so we buy that back. So, just to know that power that's being produced, it's for the 4,000 residents in Murray. Just wanted to clear that out.
That's a good point. So, we have a power plant out there, and it's actually Murray City that buys that power. So, you'll probably hear a little bit more about that as you, some more time is spent. I know that EDL is the company that produces that power, they work with Murray City constantly.
I have a quick question in regard to that. Sorry, this is kind of awkward, but is that, when we extract the methane from the landfill, is it from the landfill or is it from the green waste?
It's from the landfill. Yep, it's from all the waste that's been put there over the last 60-plus years. Yeah.
Okay.
So, the green waste currently, we're not capturing anything. So, that is one issue with a compost operation, is it creates a lot of air quality, not issues, but air quality. It releases a lot of methane and CO2 into the atmosphere, so there are a lot of compost programs that are going in-house or where they're going to contain them because it doesn't create that. So.
Is the compost something that gets repurposed then?
The compost is resold, people put it in their gardens, on their lawns.
That's right, so you can go pick up a truckload of compost from-
Yep, so we sell very cheaply, $15 per yard, yep, and it's certified, so it gets lab-tested quarterly, and it's a great product.
It's really good.
It's just, yeah, if you've had it, it's amazing, it's just that we just don't have the space for it anymore, and we're losing that, so we're going to have to shut that down.
So, Mayor, how will this impact the green trailer that Murray City has, the green trailer program, the green waste program?
Danny, I'm looking at Danny. Honestly, that was going through my head too.
It won't impact us because our program, we grind on our site down there, then we give it away every Friday or every other Friday at our own facility, our Public Works.
Okay, so we do, that stuff is done separately? Okay.
That's why our number was so low. Other cities, it's a huge number for the green waste that goes there. Ours was 147 tons for the year, so we do our own green waste recycling at our facility.
But like, so I'm in the annex area, the green waste bins that we have?
Yes.
Those go out to there or do those go to Murray?
They go to Murray, where they're dumped in our yard, and then I grind them two to three times a year, and then it's just chips though, it's not compost.
Doesn't have time to cook essentially.
Okay. Thank you.
These are all great questions, and this is stuff we're looking at in the future as far as, you know, scales of economy, so if we can get more involved and so forth, there's other options there. But right now, the lowest carbon footprint actually is to put the stuff in the landfill. There's a stigma out there that the landfills are the worst place for material to be, and that's something that I try to help other people understand, that's not always the worst, especially if you've got an energy partner that is taking that and converting into power, and as Russ said, you're actually getting that power right here in this city. It all comes to Murray City, so.
And so, can you, I don't know if you're getting into this, but when you talk about landfill, do you literally dig a hole, put stuff in it, and cover it? What do you-
For the landfill?
Yes.
So, a landfill, yeah, a landfill, we dig a hole essentially, it's about 110 feet deep. We have to, before any trash goes into it, we spend millions of dollars as far as there's a clay liner that's applied, then there's a HDPE liner that's applied, then we put a drain net on top of it, and then we come in and put a foot of sand, two foot of regular soil, and then start putting the trash in it. And then once it's full, we put a top on it that's the exact same liner that's on the bottom, just in reverse on the top.
And then somewhere on the top, there's the collector of the methane.
So, then we drill, we take a, we take big drill rig, and we actually drill, for every cell, we drill about 20 vertical wells that are perforated pipe that pulls, there's a vacuum on the landfill at all times, so by regulation, I have to have a vacuum on the landfill, at least a half of PSI essentially that pulls in the landfill at all times. So, there's not any methane that escapes, it gets into the atmosphere, goes into the neighborhoods close to us, it's always pulling that, and it comes into the plant at about 50-55% methane. They clean it, take out the water, and then burn it in three large generators, 20-cylinder engines, and each one produces about 1.6 megawatts of power.
And you mentioned that all the southern Salt Lake County cities are part of the Trans Jordan landfill. What are the northern cities, where do they go?
They go to the landfill off of California in 201, that's the Salt Lake County and Salt Lake City joint landfill.
Okay.
Yep, so Salt Lake City, South Salt Lake, I couldn't name all of them, from Kearns, Taylorsville North essentially, goes there. Yep.
Thank you.
Good questions. So, long-term looking down the road, we know we're going to close in 2031. In 2017, we purchased 25% interest in a large regional landfill. The difference with the regional landfill to what we run is there's no public allowed at a regional landfill, so everything has to originate in a transfer station to get to the landfill. The pros are that you can keep your costs way down because there's very few staff that have to operate it. We're running a landfill that's as large as Trans Jordan with eight staff members. I run Trans Jordan with about 45 staff members, so we're not having to run an HHW program or recycle or do all those things that we offer the public. So, four entities, Trans Jordan, Wasatch Integrated, North Point, and South Utah Valley. So, just to explain, Wasatch Integrated is Davis County essentially, Trans Jordan is the south half of Salt Lake County, North Point is the north half of Utah County, South Utah Valley is the south half of Utah County. All that waste will eventually go to this regional landfill, it'll serve about 2-2.5 million residents, so it'll be very large. The nice thing is because of the economies, the tipping fee down there is $10.50 a ton, which is great because once we start hauling waste, our biggest cost is not tipping fees anymore, it's transportation. So, if we can keep the tipping fees cheap at the landfill, we can afford to not, we don't have to raise the rates on the residents much. So, we do have to increase, but not as much as we would otherwise. So, it is located down the southwest corner of Utah Lake, as you can see down there, it's amongst one of the LDS church farms, it's a fantastic place for a landfill, it's been out there for about 40 years. We have 800 acres, so to give you perspective, we've been landfilling at Trans Jordan on 180 acres for 60-something years. So, this landfill will be what your residents will have for landfilling for the next 100-plus years at least. Hopefully, in the next 100 years, there's some science and some technology that comes about, maybe landfills will be less used obviously, and that's the goal always, but I try to educate people and say, hey, the technology's getting better, but landfilling is also a fantastic option. It's not the old dump, right? We talk about dumps, going find a ravine in the back of the, every city in Utah's got a dump somewhere where they went in the back of the ravine and dumped their stuff off. That's not how it works anymore, and so having a well-run regional landfill is one of the most economically viable options and one of our long-term options we're very proud of, so.
Great question.
Yeah.
With this new landfill with 800 acres, is there not a conversation about green waste on those properties?
There is. The big, yep, the big issue comes the carbon footprint, and so when the numbers are run, it's 44 miles from Trans Jordan to Bayview, right? So, once you collect the green waste, you put it on a semi, you haul it down there, you process it, and you haul it back, your costs are going to be higher than even landfilling and even worse on the environment than had you landfilled in the first place. So, it's kind of like the glass recycling, excuse me, conversation that people want to have a lot. Glass is just sand, and sometimes the best thing for it to do is go into the landfill. Beer bottle, you know, anything that's glass and breaks up, it's inert, it doesn't hurt the environment, it doesn't leach, it doesn't do anything like that, but to get another truck to run through the neighborhoods to collect can be very problematic sometimes, so.
So, you're saying just throw our glass in our regular garbage can? Is that what you're saying?
It depends on your dynamic of where you're at. I'm not saying that that's the best option for everywhere, I'm saying that's the option. On occasion, that's sometimes the best, based on, for example, Summit County did a big analysis on what they should do with other glass, and instead of hauling it down the canyon, going through all your neighborhoods, and then going down to Nephi where the glass recycling area is, they decided it was best to put it in landfill because it's just sand. It's all it is, right? So, plastics, different story.
Yeah.
Metals, different story, it's a very robust recycling market for plastics, number ones and twos and metals right now. So, all of these things have to be weighed, but I use that as an example for the green waste. Having a green waste program at Bayview is a great idea, I have space down there, I've got to get the other players involved, but I also have to convince the residents to pay more to recycle their green waste than they would pay just to landfill, if that makes sense. So, when I get a landscaper out there, what's the number-one concern he has when he drops off his landscaping material? How much is it going to cost me?
Oh, yeah.
And when I say it's going to be $35 a ton for to put it in the landfill, or it's going to be $64 a ton to put it into green waste, he's going to say, I'll put it in the landfill. And so, it's hard to get scale when people have the option, and we believe in giving the consumer the option of deciding what they want to do with it. So, that's in answer to the council member that's on the phone, I think hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, well, and my follow-up question to that is that with the current landfill, isn't there like a lasagna effect that you could put green waste on top and then continue it that way, or does that not?
You can't, no. The state would never permit it because of the gas collection system that's on the top, and the landfill's always moving. There are some certain things you can do, it can be very temporary, you can put temporary buildings, you can put, you know, mountain bike courses, you can put solar panels on landfills, but you have a hard time pouring like a pad that you need to compost on, has to be able to collect the rainwater that gets onto the pad and so forth, and on top of a landfill, that gets very problematic, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. So, that's the Bayview landfill. So, in our future, we're going to have two transfer stations. The Sandy City Transfer Station is currently in the permitting process and design process now, about 30% designed. It's located on 90th South and 700 West, right next to Sandy City's Public Works. So, it goes Sandy City Public Works, there's a gap, and then Sandy Suburban Improvement District. It's going to be sandwiched between the two of those, and I'll show you here in just one minute. So, half of our waste, essentially Murray, Midvale, Sandy, and Draper will flow through that transfer station. The other half of our waste, West Jordan, South Jordan, Riverton, and then Harriman gives us all their trash, but they're not a member city, they pay full gate rate for their waste, they will go through the transfer station at Trans Jordan. So, this is what it looks like. This is located at 90th South and 7th West. You can see the outline in red is going to be a new facility for the household hazardous waste, that'll be the county's headquarters for HHW. We're going to leave the satellite facilities at both landfills, there's one at Salt Lake County's landfill and one at Trans Jordan. This will be a nice new facility with new technology, and they'll be able to take all the paint, oil, batteries, everything there. The section you can see in yellow is, was property we acquired from Sandy City, that's a 50-year lease to own from them, that's where our scales and recycling center will be, and then at the bottom, you can see there, there's a blue outline, that's where the transfer station will be. That's about a 45,000-square-foot building, just about one acre under roof. That'll serve your residents, that'll be the best option for them to go. They'll have the option to go either place, you can go to Trans Jordan or the Sandy City Transfer Station, but I'm guessing most Murray City residents will hop on I-15, go to 90th South and get rid of their waste at that facility. Until Trans Jordan is full, we will haul the waste from this transfer station to Trans Jordan. Once Trans Jordan is full, then that waste will go directly to Bayview from that transfer The benefits from that facility for the Murray residents, closer, it's closer for your contract hauler, so ACE may give you a reduced rate, that's up to your staff to negotiate that. I know some of the other cities are already talking to their contract haulers about cutting their routes because one truck now will be able to get maybe three or four collections, their trucks full a day instead of just one or two because they have that extra 20 miles to the land, 10 miles out, 10 miles back. So, it gives each driver more time to spend collecting waste and less time driving the waste to the landfill, if that makes sense. So, ACE can do more with fewer staff and also fewer trucks on the road.
Excuse me.
Yes.
East of 9th East, we have Wolford. So, 9th East West is ACE. So, we have different haulers.
Yeah, either, any of the haulers, sorry. I think ACE is the one that I think of when I think of Murray because it's got, most of my cities have ACE collecting their waste.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Just wanted to make that.
There's also Republic Waste Management in the Valley, they also bring a lot of our, some of the apartment complexes, they go out to bid, it could be any of those three haulers bringing it to us as well, so. So, but they're going to choose to use that little closer location, which will bring the cost down hopefully for the city, uh, as your, for your collection contracts. Uh, the big thing there is a reduction. We did a big, uh, traffic survey and the reduction in air, in, uh, uh, mileage on all those trucks brings air quality, makes air quality better. That's the big thing in the valley. Our number one environmental concern in Salt Lake Valley is air quality. And so for every gallon of diesel fuel we can keep from being burned, uh, these transfer stations are great because it brings it to the local, uh, communities able to collect it without having the trucks have to drive everywhere to get rid of the waste. So, so these trucks come in for about every eight big, uh, 10-wheeler trucks. We can put it into one big truck and then haul it to the landfill in one load and put it out. And then they, those big trucks back into a big tipper, picks them up in the air. Looks like we're launching a semi truck into orbit, right? But dumps the waste out, they go back and they pick it up again and come back and, and drop it off at the landfill. Um, we'll have a residential recycling drop-off. So if the residents have more waste than they can put in the recycling bins, they can bring that out there as well that we'll take care of. Um, we, we anticipate about half of our waste stream, about 200,000 tons going through that facility. About 150 commercial inbound trucks, that's the trucks that go through the neighborhoods will come in there every day. About 400 residential loads and then 27 of the big trucks will be hauled out to goes to the landfill to get rid of the big, uh, loads of trash.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Um, okay. When you talk about recycling, what about plastic bags? Does that?
Plastic bags are not recyclable in any stream and should not be put in the recycling.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want, I wanted you to say that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I loaded question, but yes, that's it.
But can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because there's grocery stores that do take the recycling bags. What do they do with them?
Good question. I've never had one give me a really good explanation. I've asked myself. I don't know.
So they take them in the back?
Uh, I don't, they're not, I'm not getting them from them. I don't know if they're, if they have a national program that somebody's taking them and I don't, I'm not sure. But, um, I don't know. There's, to my knowledge, there's not a really good way to recycle a plastic bag. I know I pick up, my staff picks up about a zillion of them stuck to our wind fences.
Yeah.
That can become airborne, but other than that, I don't know what else to do.
We use them for kitty litter.
There you go.
But we have no more cats, so now we have all these plastic bags and.
Yeah, there's, I've seen some interesting uses of them for sure.
So when you mentioned recycling, where does the, oh, sorry, Rosalba, go ahead.
No, 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 I was gonna, I was just gonna touch on plastic bags really quick. I know Clever Octopus is currently working on a program where they can take any plastic. I guess like materials like that, like bags or whether it's covering on water bottles or anything like that. And they're in transition of doing that and getting a facility themselves because you can reuse them or repurpose them for blocks.
Well, that would be great because to my knowledge right now, there's really nothing that can be done. Yeah.
And Gary, you were going to say something and then we've got just about five minutes to wrap up.
Yeah, when you mentioned recycling, does, do you send it off somewhere else then, when it comes to the transfer station?
We do. So we just, we use the local recycling companies, Rocky Mountain and, and Waste Management, both have large facilities in the valley. And they bid on it every month. So we, we send a lot of scrap metal, thousands of tons a year to those facilities. And it's based on market value. So we do kind of an ongoing bid process to get the most we can. That money comes back to Trans Jordan to use for other things to keep the tipping fees down. So.
And the recycling is going up, right? I mean, the.
Metal kind of peaked. Metals and plastic peaked about a couple of months ago and they've kind of stabilized now. So we hope they'll stay where they're at, they're good. You know, a ton of scrap metal is about $220 in value right now. That's a great place. Anything over $200 is very fan, is fantastic. It got down to $40 a ton, which was, people were losing money hauling it, right? It costs more to haul it than that.
Cost, yeah.
Yep. So we want to drive that recycling and that's through good, uh, commodity prices. So, yep. Okay, I'll, I'll quickly go through here. Um, we're, like I said, we're in the process of designing the Sandy Transfer Station. It's going to be a beautiful state-of-the-art facility. We're super excited about it. The other one will be out at Trans Jordan. This is an aerial view. You can see like my office is there in the center. The, in the red is the landfill gas to energy plant. Um, the scale house is in purple there at the bottom. The new transfer station will be just to the south of us. Uh, we acquired 58 acres from, uh, Daybreak. We have a great relationship with them. We previously Varday, since then, uh, Larry H. Miller Real Estate has purchased Daybreak. They own all of Daybreak now, anything that's undeveloped. And so we have a great relationship with them. We're building a large, uh, transitional berm on our south boundary. So the residents there will have a beautiful landscape to look at, not a landfill. Uh, they're landscaping it and we're building it for their design. So it's good to have, uh, great, uh, relationships with our neighbors. So the goal there is to have all of our operations up on Highway 111. And we'll kind of mothball the rest of the landfill, get out of the neighborhoods, make sure all that's taken care of environmentally, but we'll just be up there in that industrial area. So the other transfer station to South Jordan will be very similar, about the same amount, number of loads and tonnage. Um, and then continuous side improvements. We've, we just replaced our inbound scale. We're upgrading the PCC, putting in some new lighting, uh, so we get up to OSHA standards on some of the lighting and things we're excited about. So a couple of neat projects I'll talk about. One of them is ZipLine. I don't know if you've heard about this, but, uh, ZipLine is a company that is committed to bringing medicine around the world. They just signed a large contract with IHC. Their facility is located on top of the land, the old landfill. So, um, it's really neat. They're out there, they're actually set up right now. They're ready to fly. FA is going to give them, uh, conditional use status in March and then they should start flying commercially, hopefully by May and June. Again, this removes thousands and thousands of vehicles from the road. Um, they're going to drop medic, medicine and supplies at people's, uh, residences. It's going to be an interesting, they, they're doing this throughout the world already. They have about 20, uh, of these sites set up and, uh, they're, they're really excited. But it's just another use for us to use that property there that's, uh, closed landfill space. So they didn't burn, they didn't build any permanent facility. It's just temporary. They have a launching pad, they can land stuff, they have all the support, uh, equipment up there. It's really neat. So we're excited about that. It also brings revenue to the landfill, right? A lease is always good news. So, um, they will start flying this spring. And then as I mentioned before, our landfill gas to energy partnership, you can see as Russ mentioned, that's a partnership between Murray City, Trans Jordan and EDL. EDL is a company based out of Australia. They own power plants like this throughout the world. Their goal is to convert, uh, dirty, uh, methane into clean green energy. And that's what they do. So they're a great partner. They've been great to work with. They were formerly Granger. They were acquired by EDL and they've been a great partner to work with. Again, they produce about 4.5 megawatts. That's about a 98, 99% up, uh, on time, online time, which is, means their, their downtime is only just to maintain those machine, those engines. Otherwise those engines are generating power. It's not like solar where you only get it when sun's out. Night, day, 365 days a year, those engines are running and producing power. So it's a great program. And it's also a great additional revenue source for Trans Jordan. So two last things. Number one is I have an education. She's, uh, had some back, um, uh, surgery and issues, so she's not here tonight. Her name is Jill Fletcher. She's fantastic. She probably gets to see most of your children if you have third graders or have had third graders. She tours and goes to all the schools, talks them about environmental, um, issues with, with solid waste, how to recycle better, uh, all those kinds of things. She's great. We have tours come out to the landfill, full buses. She takes them around, shows them what's going on. She's willing to answer any of your questions or help out if you've got any groups. Um, and then finally my contact as well as here. So, um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions I haven't answered, but I appreciate your time. I kind of went through a lot of information very quickly and I apologize.
I'm sorry if you felt rushed at the end. That was incredibly helpful and important information. And everyone's questions were really great. There was a lot I didn't know there, so I hope, I didn't want to make anyone feel bad about asking questions. They were really, really great. Any last questions before we go?
I just have a quick one.
Yeah.
I don't know if this goes to Danny or you, I don't know. But so in the parks, there's the glass. Where do we take that glass, that, the bins that we throw our glass in? Where does that go?
That ends up at Corning. Owens Corning.
Momentum picks it up, they haul.
Thank you, I know. We appreciate it.
Momentum picks it up from them and there's a contract for an ace in momentum. They pick it up because that's their, uh, bins. And then they haul it down to, um, Corning in Nephi.
Nephi.
Nephi. And then it's made into insulation, from what I've been told. So.
So it's a good program. So I, I hope I didn't take your idea of glass recycling. In certain areas, it's fantastic. And then for this valley, it's great because we have a straight shot down. These outlying areas like Wyoming trying to haul glass all the way from Jackson Hole to Owens Corning, doesn't make sense environmentally because we're jumping over dollars to pick up dimes a lot of times. And so I, I, I didn't mean to say anything about Murray's program.
You're fine. And then another quick one. So you know the, the place where, at the public works where you can drop off your oil and all that? That little area where the gate is and the gate opens and you drive it in the back? Is that still going to be open or is that going to be closed for the citizens or do we go there?
I think when we look at it, um, in 2024, I think that HHW in Sandy will open. They'll accept more stuff than we do. The counties, they've told me that they'd like to shut that down.
Okay.
Because it's, it's just down the street from us. And they, and they take everything. So it's, it will shut down in probably 2024.
Yeah. And they may even be open before us. They're actually a little ahead of schedule. So it'll probably open, the HHW should open in 2023.
And then you let the citizens know that this is going, that facility over by Public Works will be closed?
Yes, we will.
In, in the future, whatever. Okay.
Yep.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Well, I, again, Russ mentioned, we didn't have our, um, legislative breakfast that we normally do where you're all usually invited. And I, I apologize with COVID, we've just kind of backed off of that. But I'm doing more of these presentations. So I appreciate being here. You're all welcome to come out and, and take a tour. And we would be happy to facilitate anything you'd like. Uh, Jill loves to take care of that stuff. So we just can get together on some scheduling and make that happen. I've had some councilmen, councils that like to come out and do a work session, use our facility because we have some nice facilities to meet in.
Yeah.
If you wanted to advertise that and then you could have a work session with a tour as like kind of a joint thing. So that's an option.
Thank you. I went to the breakfast when we lost mayor and I went out for the breakfast.
Yeah.
But we couldn't stay for the tour because we had another engagement that we had to be up in the city for. But I would love to go on a tour.
We can do it for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Brenda Moore. She's going to talk to us about an ordinance amending the city's big budget fiscal year 2021, 2022. I forgot what FY stood for for about five seconds there, but I'm back. I'm ready to talk budget now.
You're ready. I didn't do a fancy PowerPoint or anything since there's only five things on this, um, budget opening. So in the first, uh, meeting in April, um, we'll be, I'm proposing a budget opening to clean up some stuff and to just take care of a few things that need to get taken care of. This is probably the second to last. Usually right around the end of May, beginning of June, we'll do one more just to make sure we stay within, um, guidelines for all accounts. And, and so I don't get written up by the state auditor or from our auditor for going over budget. Um, so just the, some of the items. The first one is we did receive, uh, Utah Department of Public Safety alcohol grant to buy a camera. So that's $5,000. So we are receiving that and then allocating that to their equipment. And they will use some of their normal, um, equipment budget to cover the costs that the state didn't do. Uh, for those new council members, you're going to find out that everything that police ever wants is a camera. They're continually replacing their cameras. Um, they've got body cameras, they've got, uh, car cameras. Um, things wear out, they break, there's a lot of them. And then if they're not wanting cameras, they've got data storage for all of those videos that they are taking. So one of the biggest expenses besides cars for police is cameras and camera related stuff. So we try to find as many grants as possible to pay for as much of that as possible. Um, one of the things I don't do is we have in our budget, we have personnel and we have operations. We do not move money from personnel to operations without the council's approval. So the next one is, um, we have, we are still down a few positions in building and inspection. So we're light on inspectors. So we are using outside companies to do that. So the building inspections are still getting done. We're just using contractors to do that. So we're going to move some of the salaries in this budget opening from personnel down into professional services in the building department. So, um, hopefully at some point we will be able to get some inspectors. There's not a lot of them out there. Um, and, and just use our personnel. But until then, we're just moving what we had budgeted for those people down to pay the professional services. And the CIP fund, I think, um, Mayor Hales talked to everybody about this. We're going to use $200,000 of reserves to replace the amphitheater seating from the benches to stadium seating. Um, I, I think most of the citizens will really appreciate this. I know my back will appreciate it when I go to the, to the theater out there. Uh, they, I am told that that will not decrease the number of seats or numbered seats. I mean, I guess on a stadium seat or a bench, you can squeeze more people in, but we only sell as much as they are numbered. So, um, and that will be coming from CIP reserves. And the wastewater fund, um, we have and potentially may have a retirement. And what happens when we do those is people can have up to 320 hours of vacation sitting in their bank. They can have comp time up to 80 hours. They can also, depending on how long they have been with the city, there is a sick pay. And depending on how many hours of sick time they have, there is a sick pay payout that comes out when people retire. Not when they leave the city, but when they retire. So, um, we have a couple of people who have retired in or may retire in wastewater. That budget only has nine people in it. So there's not a lot of room for these payouts. So that's what this $60,000 is, is to pay, um, make sure that we don't go over budget when those get paid out. And I'm using, I'm increasing the budget for the impact fees. We have already, uh, beaten the budget for impact fees by about $200,000. I budget that very low because I never know when a big project is going to come in and, and give us impact fees. And it's like, it's possible at some point, we could get very little in impact fees coming in, in, in a year. So I budget that pretty low. So that's what I'm going to offset that with. Yes.
Sorry, what impact fees do we take that from? Is it the?
It's, uh, the impact fees are fund specific. So that is the wastewater impact fee.
Okay.
That, the budget for that will just be increased in the wastewater fund. And then, as we've talked about before, in the wastewater fund, um, we are now going to receive $1 million of the ARPA money. And then allocate that for, uh, infrastructure projects. And so then after we do this, I can move some of the money that we have received in the general fund. It's just sitting there. It can't be spent because you guys haven't told me how to spend it yet. So we're going to now spend a million of it by putting it into wastewater and let them use it for their projects. And then I've got a couple, uh, three, to be precise. Um, language things in the, the budget. The basically, I don't want to get to the end of the year and go, oh my gosh, we got more transportation tax or than. And I need to move that over to CIP because that's where we spend it from. But I don't have enough budget to do it. So then I make, and, and then the other one is the ARPA funds are sitting there. We haven't decided what to do with them. And they, if they stay there, they're going to most likely make our, um, fund balance to be more than the state will allow. And I don't want to lose track of where ARPA is. So I want to move whatever we haven't spent, which is right now $2.8 million, and move that over to, uh, CIP. And then be able to adjust the budget accordingly. So I can change the budget amount to match what I actually send over to the CIP. And then the last one, um, is if we don't spend everything, we always send money to CIP. And it, I will send anything that exceeds our 25%. The state will now let us go up to 35. But I think last year we determined that 25 is a good number. Because that way we can do capital projects out of the CIP fund. If we, if we let it go to 35, we won't have as much money for capital projects, which is one-time money anyway. It's not guaranteed to be there next year. So this, the three things in there will allow me to do that. Yes, Rosalba?
Sorry, the ARPA funding though, we're only transferring a thousand from now, is that correct?
A million right now, yes.
Okay, with the, with the, with this budget opening.
Right. So we've only decided now of our 5.7 that we're going to get totally eventually, we've only decided what to do with a million of it.
Brenda, how is that determined?
What?
The ARPA funding, where it will go?
Uh, we talked about it amongst all the council members. The rest of the ARPA funding, we'll probably have, um, some conversations, decide if any of the other funds that can qualify need it. And then otherwise we'll decide, um, what we're going to, it's going to roll into the CIP fund eventually. For federal purposes, I, we're going to, we're going to decide, do stormwater need anymore? Does wastewater need anymore? Does water need anymore? And if we say no or yes, then we'll do that. Whatever's left, we will use what they call as the lost revenue exemption, which can be up to 10 point, $10 million. And the federal government will say, okay, use it for whatever your government services are. We're still determining what their definition of government services is.
Okay, so the council will, will be part of that conversation.
Yes. Because you're the ones who have to let us spend it.
I know.
We can receive all the revenue we want. We just can't spend any of the money once we get it without your approval.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what's in the budget opening because I don't want to get to the end of the year and have the catch 22. Do we leave our fund balance too high? Or do I get written up because my transfer is bigger than my budget? So.
Any other questions? Thank you for explaining each of those so clearly.
Clarified that last statement. So we have to decide before we close the budget, right?